Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, August 27th, 2025, meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Gray. If you are joining the meeting tonight, you can join. Or the meeting will be held in person and online with the link provided on the town's website. Residents may click in to participate or call in using the phone number provided in the agenda heading. Roll call. Georgia Woodbury.
Here.
Derek Shirley.
Here.
Brad Fogg. Oh, Tom here. We have a quorum based on the fact that there are only three people here. All decisions must be unanimous in order for them to pass. Does everybody have, understand that? Okay. Our first order is the approval of the minutes of the July 23rd meeting. Is there a motion?
Derek Shirley, I motioned to approve the minutes of the July 23rd meeting.
Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, I second.
Without objection. The minutes are passed. New business tonight. Greg and Judy Rand are requesting a practical difficulty variance from the standards established in the zoning ordinance to reduce. They're going to make this an amended motion. Let me start over then. Greg and Judy Rand are requesting a practical difficulty variance from the standards established in the zoning ordinance to reduce a 50-foot required front setback down to 30 feet and a 50-foot required rear setback down to 25 feet plus or minus in order to build a structure located on his property at 5 Brasley Way, Gray Main, tax map 025305026201 in the Lake Zoning District. Does everybody understand the amended application? Okay. We're going to ask for the code enforcement officer, Tammy Munson, to come up and address why that change was made in the application and why they need it. And she also has a couple of definitions for us to understand.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if you made the motion correctly because did you add the 25-foot? Did you say 25-foot and 40-foot rear setback?
I did not.
It's both.
Yeah, it's, and I'll explain why this is a, it's it's really complicated because based on the definition of what I'm about to explain to you and the configuration of their lot, it's not, it's not easy and it's mainly dimensional stuff on paper, pretty much.
Then let's do this. I didn't make that a formal motion. There wasn't a second or vote. So under new business, I would make the motion that the application be amended at the request of the code enforcement officer to say that Greg and Judy Rand are requesting a practical difficulty variance from the standards established in the zoning ordinance to reduce a 50-foot required front setback down to 30 feet, which is on the application already, and a 50-foot required setback down to 25 feet plus a 40-foot
Rear setback.
Rear setback in order to build a structure located on his property at 5 Brasley Way, Gray Main, tax map 025305026201 in the Lake Zoning District. Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? The application is amended as such. Tammy?
I just wanted to explain why we're here and kind of go over this because I know a lot of the appeals that you had, you've looked at rectangular lots or square lots, which are pretty pretty easy and pretty obvious to determine where the front is, which is on the road typically, where the rear is, which is opposite of the front, and then, and then obviously two sides. If you look at the definition of front lot line and rear lot line, it includes right-of-ways. So that's where I suggested to Greg to do a variance in order to meet this because the intention of the 50-foot front setback is so that in case for some reason a right-of-way is ever turned into a road, he has to have a right-of-way on his property for E911's purposes because it serves two houses. So it has to become a road. So he has a right-of-way, but it's never going to be developed into any type of actual road and it's never going to have more than two houses on it. So it's merely, he's not able to meet this setback on paper. And based on this definition, and this is why we're here, is because he has multiple fronts on this property. And normally you would look at this and think, well, that's the side when it's actually by definition then becomes the rear. So it's pretty confusing. But it's, it's merely a requirement on paper. It's not really impacting anything around him. So do you have any questions on that? Was that clear enough?
Looking at the sketch that was submitted, I want to make this as simple as I can for me anyway. I want to write front lot line somewhere on this piece of paper. Where do I write it?
So you write it on Ramsdale Road.
Okay, so Ramsdale Road is the front.
Well, actually, no, it's not.
Okay.
You write it on Brasley Way.
That's front.
Brasley is the front. Because the definition says that if you have a property on a corner lot, the shortest dimension from the structure is the front.
Okay.
So the shortest dimension is the 31 feet to his proposed building. And it's 125 feet to Ramsdale. So that's actually his side.
So this is side.
And Ramsdale Road is the side setback.
And so then what you would normally think is a side then becomes a rear, which is 40 feet to the, to the rear of the structure, proposed structure. And then he has an existing structure that is 25 feet. And so the reason for the amendment to the most room was because I met with him and after I thought about it, I said, let's get everything legalized on your property if you're going to go in front of the board. Just in case anything in the future ever comes up for appraisals, refinancing, title companies, all of it. And it's a really confusing situation, so.
Now, you just said something about 25-foot to an existing structure?
Yes, his shop is existing right now.
Okay.
It's already built.
That's the colored?
Nope, the colored building is just a utility building.
Oh, okay, sorry.
The shop is labeled shop.
Okay, I was in the wrong drawing.
So that 25-foot, you'd normally would consider that a side and that's a rear. There's going to be land use attorneys after tonight.
So there are basically two rear setbacks on the lot because of two different structures. Okay. Got it. Any questions? Everybody's got their, their, uh?
I'm just, I'm just double checking and then I'll.
Okay.
Side, yeah.
And then there's a rear setback.
On the shop, yeah.
Over here on the shop, yeah.
Yep, yep, okay. I'll make sure I'm on the same page.
So just to summarize, basically, if you're on a corner lot, your front lot is the shortest dimension to whatever, whichever road. And then your rear lot line becomes the opposite of your front. Got it? That's why I thought I'd do an introduction for you from, you know, prior to Mr. Rand getting up here and, and going through his, his explanation of why he's asking for this and answering all your fun questions. I do want to just add that the front of his property is, the property is partially located in the shoreline zone. But none of these structures that we're talking about, it's only the front portion. He's, you know, at least what, a couple hundred feet back from the shoreline. He could explain that to you, but there's nothing on here that's actually, none of these buildings are actually located in the shoreline zone.
Okay.
Okay?
Looks like.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Elliot Small, a Pennell graduate from 1920-something, my 10th grade geometry teacher would be proud that I understood that. Okay, would somebody representing the Rands like to step up to the podium, please?
Gregory Rand, 5 Brasley Way.
Hey Greg, as you probably know from filling out the application, there is a series of questions that you had to answer. And what the board does, it goes through each one of these questions, asking you to, you know, make sure that we understand why this is needed, and then we vote on each one individually. And then we vote on the main motion as a whole.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to let Georgia kind of lead the way here.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. First is, the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general condition of the neighborhood. You answered that the property contains right-of-way.
Servicing two houses.
Servicing two houses, therefore is designated as a private way.
Yeah. Brasley Way was when, when Mr. Cook and I bought our properties, we needed an entrance to come in. We chose a location opposite of telephone pole out on Ramsdale, came in across my property and then crossed over onto his and we built Rob's house first. And we built my, my shop and then my house the following year. But I guess the, the, the unique circumstances are the driveway, which was on the survey as a 20-foot easement is, was established first, which divided my lot in half. And if you notice, the shop is right up against what is considered the rear setback is is at, is at 25 feet. And and you can see that the, the distance from the front of the shop to the road is, is minimal as well. You know, I'm kind of shoehorning things in here. So the, the shop was established. Now, this, the structure that we're proposing now is a, I call it kind of a glorified shed. Tammy considers it an accessory structure because of the, the square footage, but it's in a location opposite the shop. And I, and it's 40 feet long, so I can get just the 30 in the front, the 25 in the back, a location. It's a perfect location for me, the proximity to the, the shop and, and access for, for, for the use. So what I want to do, which is just store, store a few toys in there, basically.
Are there any questions?
Oh, I have a question. Would you say your lot is shaped differently compared to your neighboring lots to make it unique as well? Or would you say it's pretty, pretty standard compared to your neighbor, neighboring lots?
Rob's, Rob's lot, the, the neighbor, depends where you're standing from the, from the road to the right of me, is similar. But his neighbor to the right is basically a rectangle. My neighbor to the left is a rectangle, more, more traditional.
Right.
Rob bought four acres and to, because, because he has to keep the 200 feet on the water and at least 200 feet on the road to to be able to divide his lot. He bought four acres and we carved it up. And one of the only ways possible to meet all the criteria to satisfy him having a, a conforming lot, 200 in the water, 200 in the road. I as well have 200 on the road or more. But I only have 75 feet down, you know, close to the water.
My only, my only question is, Mr. Rand, on the newly identified rear setback, is that another person's lot or what's, what's behind the proposed shed?
That's Rob Cook's lot.
Okay.
My neighbor, Rob. He, he and I share Brasley. He's obviously well aware of this. We, you know, discussed it.
Okay, so looking at the map, Rob is to the right of the proposed shed or the proposed auxiliary structure?
Yeah, if you, if you come in Brasley, you, you can see that we kind of veer off to the left to go to our house. He would go straight, straight down to his property or to his house. The, the proposed area where the structure is, is all wooded, his land, my land, they're, they're all both wooded right there. Everything closer to the water has been cleared and.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So is his neighbor there or there or the whole?
Well, that's what I was trying to figure out. Greg, would you approach, please? I just want to make sure that. Just want to make sure that we fully understand. This part of the property, who belongs to that?
That's Rob Cook.
Okay, and does he have a house instruction stuff over here or?
That's the front of my house. That's 200 feet from the water.
Okay, I understand that. I'm talking about Mr. Cook.
Rob's house is way down here at 100 feet.
Okay.
That is.
This is Mr. Cook, Cook property and his house is down here somewhere.
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
That's why it's so shaped so weird. He said his was, yeah.
Is there a motion?
Georgia Woodbury, I move that the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general condition of the neighborhood.
Derek Shirley, I will second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? You want to do a letter B, Derek?
Sure. Letter B, granting the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not unreasonably detrimentally affect the use or market value of a bonding properties.
My response was, this is a requirement that is nearly on paper and will have no impact on any other properties. And I think Tammy talked earlier about on, you know, the, the uniqueness of the shape of the properties, like we just discussed and and again, the, the distance from my neighbor is, just isn't, isn't relevant.
I, oh, I have a question. I have a question. I know you said from like the water short of your house is 200 ballpark, how far is that new from the water?
It's over 400 feet.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Derek Shirley, I motion that granting the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not unreasonably detrimentally affect the use or market value of a bonding properties.
Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? I'll take the third one because it's the easiest to see. Mr. Rand, is the practical difficulty the result of an action taken by, by yourself or a prior owner?
My response was I did not set these requirements. As Tammy spoke earlier, it, the ordinance really applies to, you know, future, future development and that just isn't going to be the case here. It's, it's, they're two acre lots. They each have a residence on them and that's all it will ever be.
So who put Brasley Way in place?
Mr. Cook and I decided when we first bought our properties, that, that was the location for the reason I stated earlier is lined up with the pole across the street. It's a straight shot, it, straight shot right to his house. And then I just veered to the, to the left a little bit.
Uh, Mr. Rand, when, when you guys did Brasley Way, were these ordinances in place at that time or was this so many years ago that?
No, it was five, five plus years ago. I, I don't know, to be honest with you. This, this particular one, it didn't, it, it never came up when I built my shop. I, I applied for permit. It was approved. And this is all news to me just recently.
Sounds good then. Does anybody else have any questions? Any comments? I make the motion that the practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the petitioner or a prior owner. Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Georgia?
The granting, well, let's see, D, no other feasible alternative to a variance is available to the petitioner.
And yet, oops, sorry.
Okay, and know what the location of the property where the structure would fit. I had, I had spoken earlier why why that was the, a better location for me personally. This, I actually had a a little bit of a gravel pad over there where I parked a couple of trailers, utility trailers and so forth. Occasionally maybe the tractor. The proximity rate opposite the shop. So it was, it was cleared. We, we maintained the buffer from the Ramsdale Road into our property for, for privacy. It's, uh, it was, it'd be pretty obvious to anybody who was going to put up a structure, that's, that's the place to be. And the least, the least amount of effort for me with a gravel pad already there. Sorry? Yes, yeah, yeah. No other impact to the, the land or the vegetation or the trees at all.
Okay. Does anybody else have any more questions? Is there a motion?
Georgia Woodbury, I move that there's no other feasible alternative to a variance available to the petitioner.
Is there a second?
Derek Shirley, I second that motion.
Any comments?
Yeah, I would just say, it just to me, I kind of agree. It's like it, the way the property is, it's kind of, I don't want to say obvious, but you'd be kind of cramming it and pushing it in any other spot, so.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Letter E?
Yes.
Uh, granting of a variance will not unreasonably adversely affect the natural environment.
I believe we, we kind of just answered that one a second ago. There is no impact. It's.
And it says about 400 feet from the shoreline?
Yes, over 400.
Any other questions or comments?
No, just that he said there wouldn't be a lot of, there wouldn't be any clearing done of trees or anything. So the spot's already there. Because my initial thought was why wouldn't you just move it a little bit closer since you've got 125 feet? But if you have to clear and cut, that makes a big difference.
Or make that in the form of a motion, Derek?
Yeah. Derek Shirley mentions that granting the variance will not unreasonably adversely affect the natural environment.
Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, I second.
Discussion or comments? All those in favor? Unanimous? Now, letter F is the property is not located in whole or in part within the shoreline areas described in Title 38, Section 435. But we noticed that part of your, a, a small part of your property is in fact in the shoreline zone. But you already have structures within so many feet of the shoreline zone and you're building approximately 400 feet outside the shoreline zone. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
No.
Tammy, could you step to the podium for a minute, please? Is this something that's unique to this part of town because of, I mean, Ramsdale Road, there's a lot of properties in there that are within 300 or 400 feet of the shoreline. So, but is there any restrictions that you know of that would prohibit him from building, you know, again, a couple hundred feet outside the shoreline zone?
No.
Okay.
No, he, no, he's in this situation merely because of the, of, as I explained earlier, is the definitions of what front and rear setbacks are. It has nothing to do with shoreline zoning. He's far, far out of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
I would make the motion that the property, boy, this is a tough one to word.
Well, can I make a comment real quick?
Sure.
Um, I think for me, because when I was looking over this, it was a hard one to kind of wrap my head around at first. But especially when I came in here, understanding the positioning of siding, the side rear fronts. Um, I think it's really understanding of like, are we do, like the distance, the distance is really the project site versus the property site, right? It's really, that's what it comes down to and how you view it. So for me personally, I view it as the project site. Like as the, the, as, as what we're talking about versus the actual property line of the project. Does that make any sense? Because for me, it's like one of those things where, you know, if, if we're, we are greens, he didn't have anything to do with this Brasley Way per, too much or before ordinances per se. It's kind of like, we're really just talking about this particular aspect of his property, which is in the project zone, air quotes, which why I kind of put, took my head able to rationalize and say how that property is not in the zoning and the shoreline zone. So I feel like I babbled a lot. So if you can, you have anything else, just tie me in, Brad, that'd be great. That's kind of where I'm, I'm at with that.
Okay, so I just want to make my, make it clear to myself, Tammy, that the proposed structure itself is approximately 400 feet from the shore or is it like 400 feet from the shoreline zone?
From the shore.
Okay, and about 200 feet off the shoreline zone.
Right, right. I think it's important to understand that if if the definition of the, of the front and rear lot lines did not include right-of-ways or right-of-ways that serve two houses, he would not be here tonight because this would actually meet because Ramsdale would be the front, the 40-foot would be the side, the shop thing would be the side, and the 25 feet would be a side. He'd be completely conforming. The only reason why he is here is because he's got a right-of-way that is really a driveway, but it has to be a right-of-way because it serves two houses for E911 purposes. So it has zero impact. It's a, it's a requirement on a piece of paper is what you're dealing with. And so if it, if that definition did not include that language, he wouldn't be here tonight because he'd be conforming with the requirements. He wouldn't even need to be, have, have an appeal.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. I would make the motion. The property is located in part within the shoreline area as described in Title 38, Section 435. But the work build zone or the work build site is more than 200 feet from the shoreline zone. And such need for variance is the result of E91 requirements. All other requirements would have ordinarily been met otherwise. Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, I second that.
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Unanimous? Now for the main motion. Is there a main motion? That's true. Before we go to the main motion, let's take a review of the practical difficulty, requirements A through F. I think we've actually just done that by.
Basically, yes, just for the record.
Yeah, that's what, I think that's what we just did, A through F.
Right.
And we looked at the dimensional standards.
Yep.
And we've got the definition of the, or new definitions for us of the rear, side, and front setbacks, uh, caused by a right-of-way. Anything else? Is there a main motion?
Yeah, I think. Uh, Georgia Woodbury, I move that Greg and Judy Rand be
Grant.
Granted an amendment for, uh, for practical difficulty variance from the standards established in the zoning ordinance to reduce a 50-foot required front setback down to 30 feet and a 50-foot required rear setback down to 25 and 40 feet in order to build a structure located on his property at 5 Brasley Way, gray tax map 025305026201 in Lake zoning district.
I second the motion. Are there any comments from the public? Any discussion from the board? All those in favor of the motion? Unanimous? Okay, Mr. Rand, sometime in the next week, somebody will, uh, give you a call to say, come over and pick up your, uh, your signed variance.
Right, right.
That is if this, you know, if I can get over there and sign it in a timely manner, at a time other, at a time other than Inga's lunch. She's always calling me to come sign it. I says, well, when can I get there? So I go to lunch from 12:01. I said, geez, that's when I could have been there, you know? Okay, any other old business? We need to adjust the, um, agenda to include, as much as I hate to say this, election of officers. Because my term as, as chairman actually expires at the end of this month. So is there any?
You need that on your next agenda?
What's that?
You need that on your next agenda?
Or can we amend the agenda or do it now?
I think we could amend the agenda and do it now.
I mean, I don't see a lot of changes between now and next month.
No, I was just gonna, I just wanted to, um, before we, I didn't know that you were gonna continue the meeting on, but before we ended the meeting, I was just gonna, um, congratulate Derek Shirley on becoming the chair of the Ordinance Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
Um, he's actually, um, and, and, and doing some more ordinance work and I, and, um, he's a crucial member and he stepped up to the plate and decided to, um, volunteer to be the chair. So congratulations, Derek.
Thank you.
And I'll let you move on to doing your, um, finishing your business.
Thank you. And I would also congratulate Derek on that appointment. Uh, he's been a, a good asset to the town. Uh, uh, a younger, very honestly, comparison, a member of the younger generation.
Yes.
That's slowly moving into town, that we need more people of, of that generation, of his generation, uh, to volunteer for committees in town. Because this town cannot, uh, operate without volunteers sitting on zoning board of appeal, planning board, ordinance review, uh, dry school, uh, the dry school committee, the library committee, uh, the blueberry committee. There are so many committees that need volunteers. And very honestly, I think people who sometimes are afraid of a zoning board, it doesn't take a lot of your time. It takes maybe 12, 15, 16 hours a year. And for zoning board of appeals, we provide training through the main municipal association. So, uh, general public people, please, uh, step up, volunteer, and help your town. Our final act of business would be, uh, nomination of a chair. Uh, is there a nomination?
Georgia Woodbury, I nominate Brad Fogg for chair.
I second that.
Uh, without objections?
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you. I would nominate Georgia Woodbury for vice chair.
I second that.
Without objection?
No objection.
Is there any other business before the town zoning board of appeals tonight? Then without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.